All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the school board. And as is our custom, we'll begin in a moment. We've got another question. Mrs. Gonti, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
We'll be late.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Ladder?
Here.
Here. We begin with public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wamatoes School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comments on each end to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond to the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If there's anyone present who would like to make comments at this time, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to your comment. There being none, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mrs. Ladder. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mielefeld. I would note that the check register is present if anyone cares to review it. Is there any Board discussion on the consent agenda? Any community comment? Mrs. Gonti, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladder?
Yes.
Mrs. C.
Yes. That brings us to recognition. Mr. Ladder?
The Winpano Middle School Forensics team took part in the Kettle Moraine Forensics Festival and captured several awards, including six first-place medals. First-place medal winners included Kate Malata, storytelling; Caitlin Hembrook, solo serious; Jenna Hall and Laura Carlson, informational; Ellie Anderson and Hattie Terry Kahn, news reporting; Abby Beck and Sarah Litzinski, informational; and Nolan Presnick, humor solo acting. Second-place winners included Carly Gray and Taylor Hydeman, demonstration; Sarah Law, poetry; Maddie Carroll, storytelling; Maddie Jordan, impromptu speaking; and Katie Riker and Hannah Wolfcamp, informational. Third-place winners were Shelby Shio and Emma Bittner in the category of informational. The team also won 51 excellent first-place winners and 22 good second-place ribbons in the competition.
The East High School Jazz Band has been in the finals for the prestigious 15th Annual Essentialy Ellington High School Jazz Band Competition and Festival. East High School will compete against 15 finalist bands and participate in workshops, jam sessions, and more during a three-day competition and festival in New York City May 8th through the 10th. The annual Essentialy Ellington High School Jazz Band Competition and Festival is one of the most innovative jazz education events in the world and features high school musicians from across North America. Planning starts electric after they submit a recording, which goes through a rigorous screening process. The three top-placing bands will perform with artistic director of jazz at Lincoln Center, Winston Marsalis. The event will also include a performance by the 15-piece Jazz at Lincoln Center Orchestra, whose members serve as mentors for the finalist bands throughout the weekend. Rob and Robin Engel are co-band directors at the school.
Thank you. Congratulations to each of these individuals. We now move to our action items. Mr. Ray?
It is recommended that the school board approve the revisions to the, excuse me, T-S-O-T contract as recommended by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, which were presented and discussed at the February 22nd meeting in Isla.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Randall, is there any Board discussion? Seeing none, is there any community comment on this action item? Mrs. Gonti, would you call the roll?
Mr. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladder?
Yes.
Mrs. C.
Yes. That brings us to reports to the Board, and we'll begin with Student Services. Mr. Ray Kowski?
Thank you. As you may recall, last year Dean Hoist, supervisor of Student Services, and myself, shared with you change in our service of our student services department. And so tonight, I've invited some of the people that have been responsible for making that change happen, and they're going to share a presentation with you. So I'm going to ask them to come up and sit around here, and they are going to share their present. And Dean, did you have anything you want to share?
I concur with everything you just said.
Okay. We're going to take a step back and turn it over to the people that are doing it. Yep.
I'm saying, harder than anyone that counsels at Wamatoes High School, and everyone's going to introduce themselves as they go through, and we're all going to take part of the presentation and some information. So we're going to start with a little bit of a review as to why we restructured our student services model. And it's really based on four things: the American School Council Curriculum Standards, the Wisconsin Comprehensive School Council, and then Career Development, the state statute requiring K-12 school council curriculum, and our own individual Wamatoes School District Student Services Department. We're really looking at moving from a position to a program where the focus used to be on admin students. It was crisis-driven. It was an on-call approach. It was usually responsive services. It was very secondary-focused, and it was individually implemented. So each counselor kind of did their, you know, thing in their office with students. Well, now we're moving to a program where it's going to include all students. And we have curriculum. We do have standards and benchmarks. And as I understand, they have, they should be on the website. I'm not sure if they are right now, but if not, they should be in the very near future. Our program is going to be 100% K-12. It's a collaborative effort between community students, staffers, and parents. And it's also collaborative between student services now, where we have social workers and school psychologists involved more in the day-to-day, 100% involving students.
I'm Maggie Ballmore, a school counselor at Eisenhower Elementary School. And our expected outcomes, how this training came about, was DPI got involved and did Level 1 and 2 training in other parts of the state. Actually, southeastern Wisconsin was one of the last areas in the state that DPI targeted to do this training, of which some of us went to Level 1 training, the rest of all the student services experienced Level 2 training. And the other state, the other part of the state, has found that there has been increased student achievement K through K-12 because of this model and how it's run. And as she said before, it increases collaboration between student, parents, community. And our post-secondary school enrollments are higher because the students know a little bit more about themselves through the classroom guidance and the individual conferences that we will be doing with students 5th, 8th, and 11th grade. They have found that discipline problems and dropout rates are lowered. Because students know what classes they want to take, this affects more in high school, they know what classes they want to take because they had a better plan through these conferences in 5th and 8th grade, that we avoid those last-minute schedule changes in August and early September. We are now coordinated together, really goes after that Tier 1 pro-acute services for all students. With the slide that she had before, we were really falling into that Tier 2 and Tier 3, where we were just kind of attacking the crises that whatever came to the counselor's door, we dealt with. And now we're more out in school and reaching all students, and it's much more scheduled. And because our students are a little more knowledgeable about who they are and what they want, and of their education, it also shows a decrease in them being undecided of what they want to do when they graduate from high school. The student services model itself is a mission to deliver knowledge and skills, and it is in three areas: being academic, career, and personal social development, comprehensive in scope. And we get some of that through our standards and benchmark, just like our other grade levels, K-12 have in the district. Now, the student services department has those also. It is preventative in design, we want it to be preventive here, and developmental in nature, K-12. We are an integral part of the educational program. We are doing that collaboratively. We're going to be looking more at data as we have these individual learning conferences with our students and their parents. We will be conducting surveys to see how those go, what things we need to improve. We'll also use data as curriculum and things that we do in our schools evolve. Are we doing the best we can? When do we need to change? How can we make it better? And, because we're always trying to seek improvement, and then we want to share our successes. This is what really has come to bring us all together and put us all on the same page. And by that, I mean, Longfellow, what, no, I can't read these trees, sorry. I'm calling, sorry, Longfellow. We always did similar things, but we didn't really work together as much as we now do. We use our PLCs most Wednesdays where we're working with the counselors from Wamatoes. And this is really, comes out of this. The foundation part is really the Level 1 and Level 2 training that Maggie talked about, that we took through CECL 1. And that laid the foundation, as it said. You know, developed a mission, we developed guidelines, beliefs, and philosophies. And right now, where we're at, the delivery system, we've looked at the school guidance curriculum, and they've done this at the high school and at the elementary as well, and what are we current, what have we been doing? And how does that fit into the new program? And we've also branched out. We, through this whole process, came to realize that at the middle school level, careers, we really did not do much with careers, not nearly what we should be doing. And so that's what we've been working at with Wamatoes, looking at a program that the, we've chosen here and chose, we're cruising, and the activities that are on there, and how it fits in, and how we do it in 5th grade, in the middle school, and in the high school, so that it all fits in the next stream. Individual student planning, we are, we've come up with a plan for the students, an individual plan, and we're going to be having conferences. This year, we pilot some of the program, so we're doing it with about 75 of our 8th graders. Next year, we'll do it with all of our 8th graders. The following year, we'll have the parents involved in it. The management system, doing action plans, use of time and calendars are the areas that we've used so far under there. Next step is going to be the advisory council. And then the accountability, that's three to four years after we got data, surveys, and that we can look at. And there's a Level 3 training with that. Right, there is a Level 3 training. Curriculum themes, these themes go throughout K-12. But there, for example, careers. Careers in elementary, not as much as in the middle, not as much as in the high school. The personal, social, and the academic, again, those are two areas that are more concentrated in the elementary and then in the middle. Looking toward, when students go into high school, they've got study skills, they've got goal setting. Transitions is something we do from 5th grade to 6th, and from 7th, 8th to 9th grade. So it might look a little bit different at each level, but these are the nine things that we touch on through K-12.
Hi, I'm Lynda Syrian. I'm a school counselor at Madison Elementary, and I'm a result of the restructuring in the district, getting student services at the elementary level on a more full-time basis. So I'm excited to be in the district and creating a program at Madison, based on all of these things that we're talking about here. Some things that have already been done and that we are doing currently, first is the restructuring, second is the Level 1 and Level 2 training that we talked about, as well as looking forward in three to five years for the Level 3 training, which is really focused on the data piece of the model. We also have developed our standards and benchmarks based on the Wisconsin standards and benchmarks that we have made more within the Wamatoes community and adjusted them. At the elementary level, we are implementing Second Step in every classroom in the district. And Second Step is a program that the district has had for quite a while, and we are working this year to have it more fully implemented throughout the district. At the 5th grade level, we, I'm working with students, as I know the other counselors and social workers are at the other elementary schools, to work with the 5th grade students to develop their individual learning plan. And these are what we use at what we're calling our moving forward conferences that happen at the 5th, 8th, and 11th grade years. This is that individual academic and career work that we do with the students. This is an integral part of the whole program because it helps the students in the classroom guidance that we do with them, to prepare them for the conference, where they share their hopes and dreams, their goals for the future, their awareness about themselves, the types of work environments they might like to work in in the future, and all of those things, which look a little different at the 5th grade level, and the 3rd level, and the 11th grade level. So another part of that is the career cruising, which is, it's an online website that the district has paid for us to have access to. And it's a phenomenal website where students can create an electronic portfolio and resume that then they share with colleges and universities that they apply to. So, kind of looking down the future. A big thing that we've been working on this year at the elementary level is the curriculum. We've kind of crosswalked our standards and benchmarks, looking at all curricular areas, K through 12, K through 5th grade, to see where some of our standards and benchmarks are being addressed in different curricular areas, like language arts and social studies and things like that, so that we can team up with the teachers and work on these things together and, you know, beat them up. So as we crosswalk the curriculum, again, we discovered the career part of this is lacking, and see the need to really address that early on.
In the middle school, as I talked about earlier, career cruising, some of those schools together, developing that, identify and deliver universal curriculum, these are the things that we're currently doing, and we've been doing for a number of years. SOS, suicide suicide, which is a state mandated program. And then develop the individual learning plans, we're in the process of starting that. And then facilitate conferences. And again, the conferences, as Lynn said, are meant to be very positive in looking at the strengths of the students.
Mick Becker, counselor at West. I guess I would tell you that one of the best things that's happened in the last year is we've got to sit down with East. Not that we didn't sit down with them before, but we've had to create standard benchmarks, create new career activities and units, and listen to everyone kind of argue and think about what would be the best way to do it. And then usually Cindy and I kind of sit down and figure out how we're going to do it afterwards, because typical with 10 people, saying how they want to do it, and sometimes it's two of us, get a lot more work done later. It's been good to hear everyone's voice, and you get all those ideas out there, because even when we disagree, there's a lot of positive discourse, a lot of learning going on about how are they doing things at East that we could do it like that at West and be a better unit? How do we do things at West that maybe they could adopt things over there at East? Career cruising, new to us as of last year. The units we changed to fit our standards and benchmarks, which we created earlier this year. In 9th grade, we will be, at least for this year, just doing the interest inventory. In future years, the interest inventory will be done already when they're in 8th grade, so they'll come up with that, and we'll then go with the learning styles inventory in 9th grade. That'll be our first unit, that's East's second unit, I believe you're doing the 10th grade unit first, you said. Also part of the 9th grade unit is a four-year plan, so they will come up with, how is my schedule going to look? In my mind's eye right now, what will I be taking my sophomore, junior, and senior year? And obviously freshmen right now, I've already chosen their classes, they're not totally solid on that, they could still make some changes, but they've chosen classes for next year already. So they're really looking at, does this make sense for me still? And do I need to make a change? And also, how is my junior and senior year going to look? Their sophomore year, not their sophomore, the sophomore year unit will consist, first going over the plan, which has a nice interest inventory in it, before they take the plan, they have a bunch of questions, before they even know why they're answering those questions, they've given us a snippet in that moment of what their interests are and what they might want to do. So we're going to present that to them in their sophomore unit. Then we will do the My Skills inventory, and we'll talk about career clusters with them briefly, and have them search out a career cluster of interest to them. The junior unit, we're not going to do a whole lot different than we used to do. It always consisted of finding two areas of interest in career, two things they may want to do. Maybe it has to do with the interest inventories they've taken, maybe it's something that they've just always wanted to do, and then we have them explore, what do I need to do to be this? I want to be a fireperson, fireman, this is where I got to go to do it. Am I on track to do that? The only thing we would like to add, at least Cindy and I would like to add, is being able to do a resume builder for them, so that that would be ready for them when they're seniors for college applications and jobs. Standardizing practices to assist the students, there's four major things at both schools. First, they're going to have an ILP, that individual learning plan, that they'll come in from 8th grade with. The second thing is registration with at least a short meeting with every student to, again, talk about that plan. Is this still what you want to do? Is it working for you? Are you showing the strengths that you need to have to keep after this plan? The third thing would be the junior conference, which is really our crown jewel at the high school level, eventually involving parents in that. The junior conference is 45 minutes to an hour, talking about, how has that ILP evolved? Again, is it what you want? Are you on track to do what you want to do? And the final thing would be a senior group meeting, which is something East has done for quite some time. West, we used to have individual meetings, now because of junior conferences, we are also going to senior group meetings. Development of the ILP, so to give you a brief on what the ILP is, it is that four-year plan, but with so much more with it. They come up from 8th grade, we will be doing the explore in 8th grade, and they'll have other assessments, the plan, possibly the PSAT, the KCEs currently. So you take all those assessments, all the interest inventories, their transcript, their grades, and the grand scheme of things, this is what they want to do. Are they showing what they need to show to do that? Could they do more than they even know that they could do right now? Where are we going from here? Continuing to develop that ILP, to make it a working document, a flexible document, something that our students are knowledgeable about, that they could talk to any one of you and say, this is what I'm trying to do here, this is my goal, it's usable to them and their parents. Participating in classroom activities, so there's parts of our curriculum that we find crosswalk work well with other departments. We would like to unify with them and be part of the development and presentation, such things like the Brown-Bake Speech and Oral Communications, lend itself well to what a counselor's doing in the high school. Applying for grants, support or implementation of our model, which has already been applied for, we'll find out more about that in June. There's talk about a secondary application also. Review and revise documents, Level 1 training, that's done a year and a half, two years ago already. But it was done on a kind of a generic basis to get the ball rolling, and given the last year, year and a half, we now need to make it more of a Wamatoes feel, make it more personal to our district. Pilot conferences at elementary and middle schools, which will be done at the latest May. Begin to look at methods of assessing the impact on student achievement. We are evaluating our conferences from the students, reviewing evaluations from them. I can tell you that they do, they'll tell you if they thought it wasn't a very useful product to them, they'll let you know. I've got some great ones, and I've had some rough ones, and that's what it's all about in pilot, finding out how we can do it better. So that's the first step. But then, I think it was mentioned before, it takes at least a couple of years to see how are we changing the district? How are we changing the product? How are we changing the students when they leave? Are there less schedule changes? Are they more solid in their career plans and thus their schedule plans? And then finally, when they leave here, are they doing what they said they were going to do? Are there less students who we'd say to be uncertain when graduating from Wamatoes? Additional curriculum development, we would like to begin to do senior exit interviews. We've done it with our ACTDAX students for quite some time, and they seem to benefit from it. It's a nice experience. If possible, we'd like to have all of our students have that sort of experience. Also, with curriculum development, would be working with other departments on those crosswalking areas. Ongoing professional development, basically, how do we change ourselves as professionals to best implement our product? And then establishing an advisory committee, which would be going on this summer. That would be combining a bunch of us with administration, as well as parents, to see how we can steer our growth.
Mr. Ladder?
I have a couple. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here and presenting. It's very helpful. My question, part of our student services staff are social workers, and how has their role changed this year, or has it?
I can start with answering that question. I think that it has been a shift in their role. I think that typically, social workers in this district have been more connected to the special education activity of our district, as well as more of a Tier 2 kind of responsive intervention. Social workers were always, the way that we were previously organized, we had social workers in the elementary schools, and one of their responsibilities was to support the implementation of the Second Step curriculum and the elementary guidance stuff. So that was an expectation of them. However, I don't think it was clearly defined. So I think that, I think that we can look at the, I look at the student services department in Wamatoes, and as we assess this model and how it could help our district, I believe that with the current student services staff we have, we have a tremendous amount of talent. And while for some of our counselors, it was a change in their practice, and for some of our social workers, a change in their practice, and some of our psychologists, is they're starting to move toward the RTI model, a response intervention. It is a change in their practice, but I think with the talent of the individuals, I believe that it is helpful, and I believe that they're all very involved in some of the elementary stuff as well as the secondary stuff. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, you know, we started out talking about status quo, the crisis driven. And those crises, I assume, are still occurring. I know what are going to continue.
Sure, they are.
And have, has there, have we had adequate personnel and time to continue to address those? I know that was a concern brought up, and that's why I'm reiterating.
I think there are crises still that come, but in many respects, if you think for all students, instead of individual meeting with Johnny, Suzie, Mary, and Billy, why not put the four together? Or because you're in the classroom and you're discussing things, they become educated and sometimes- sometimes answer their own questions themselves, where they're not knocking on your door saying, can you answer this question for me?
And I guess I'm doing that in a more serious, you know, we talked about we have more kids. Meeting groups, food and homeless and that type of thing. Those, the real crises kinds of things.
And I mean, I don't think that those issues are being ignored. I think our social workers are still very involved in that, as are our student, well, counselors at every level, from elementary.
As schools' counselors, we've had to learn to respond to some of those issues because I don't have a social worker at my school. So I will either figure it out myself, or I will call a social worker and say, how do I direct this parent? You know, where's the best avenue to get what a parent might need or a child might need?
And again, these were concerns that were brought up initially, so I'm trying to see where we're at with it, how that worked out through the year.
Well, and I think, I think when you started off asking about, and when I think about that slide and saying, things used to be crisis-driven, I don't think it's to minimize the role that we have with what we might call tier-two or tier-three in terms of intervention. I mean, that's always there. I think the fact that, that tier-one level was never, or it was limited in terms of how it was standardized and how it was defined, and how when people talked about what was happening perhaps at the elementary level with guidance activities, it was, it was just kind of scattershot. There weren't the conversations where people could say, this is what it's all about, or, well, in my building, I've kind of, I've kind of done this. And that might vary from what was going on in a different building. I think it's just added a little more structure. It's added a little more definition. And I think for the social workers at the elementary level, I remember when we started looking at this model and training and realizing that, you know, they wanted, they would always be curious about what was happening with guidance. So when the counselors were meeting, I'm thinking years back, when the counselors were meeting, social workers would be included here and there, you know, because they knew that might be applicable what they were doing. But again, it just, it just wasn't systemic. And here too, this is an evolving, this is an evolving process. And I think the fact that more people had more discussion and working together than we really ever had to, whether it's a counselor or a psych or a social worker, or east side, west side, or it's, I think that process itself has been pretty remarkable. And that's just my opinion for being in the district.
I just wanted to add one other thing too. With this model, while it is more proactive and less responsive services, there is, the model allows for that piece in it. And at the elementary level, it's, the recommended percent is about forty percent, and that for responsive services, and that decreases as you go up the grades, middle and high school. So where, when you're at the high school, the highest percentage of your time, I believe, is that individual planning. So the conferences where you're doing the individual learning plans and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. And again, I, the big picture and the end of the line, you can see where, what we're building toward. And hopefully, you know, we would be reducing some of the crises and some of those unexpected needs. But in the interim, I just wanted to know how that has played out this year. Can I ask one other quick question? The conferences, fifth, eighth, and the eleventh grade, what happens to that piece of paper? Okay, you know, you have your fifth grade conference, then what? I mean, who's involved then? And how are they involved?
Right now, for this year, because of the pilot and because career cruising doesn't have the elementary piece finished, they're working on that and we hear maybe next year, I don't know. But I, but at least for the middle school and the high school, it's all electronic. And it stays on career cruising, so it travels right with the student. Down the road, we see that happening at the elementary level as well. And some of us are introducing the career cruising to our students without them having an account on it yet, but just to introduce it.
And who's paying attention to it?
The ILP?
A month or two months, yeah.
Well, it's something that the student is constantly being reintroduced to. Honestly, some students would like to forget about it pretty quick.
Classroom or?
Okay.
How are they?
Every time we are registering them for classes at the high school level, at every conference, and then at every career unit. So it's really, you know, although a lot of students become pretty anxious when thinking about what they're going to do, and to at least get that first couple of minutes going, get the juices flowing, they don't really want to do it. Once it's started, you know, you can get them to open up and talk about it. By the time they're a junior, a lot of them don't know exactly what they want to do. They have a couple of ideas. And in a lot of junior conferences, I'll tell you what they say, I have no idea what I'm going to do. But if you ask the right questions and you, you know, you close them off, they do have a couple of ideas. Maybe they didn't even know they had them. So to answer your question from a different perspective too, from how Lynn did it, Mr. Hoffman and I at West mocked up a, if you can imagine, a Manoa folder. And four sides to it folded, it would have all the test scores, starting from eighth grade. It would have some notes from every meeting you had with the counselor. It would have the transcript. All of that would be contained in that. So that would be, even if we didn't have career cruising, it would still be contained, this ILP would be contained in that folder, which would be separate from the curriculum.
And yeah, we're doing that at the middle school level too. And then the student takes home this information and hopefully will be encouraged to share with their parents. I think the part of it too is having the parents coming in to me, there's nothing negative to me, it's that this is not a disciplinary conference, this is not, this is kind of who they are and how they see themselves in school and the world of work. And if it starts in fifth grade and it's positive, eighth grade's going to be positive. Hopefully, they have more education, so by the time they're in high school, they really are kind of planning and searching and knowing themselves a little better in their career.
This is all new, this direction. And have you begun to see a change in individual students for the better, that we are better suited? What you would like to be doing for them? Is that, I sense you, I hear a lot of words, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not hearing it. Do we see a difference?
I think that the best thing that I come out of the junior conferences, I'm getting some idea, like I'm asking this, would you think you know what you want to do? So then they've even given me some ideas of maybe what schools they want to apply to, or what career direction they want to go to. So then now, come senior year, I can pull them in, and it's, okay, I haven't seen an application for UWM yet, and you told me last year that you thought you might want to apply to UWM. So I think it's giving us some more one-on-one with some students, which is really giving us more of a chance to kind of work better with them. And, you know, we're probably not going to really know till over time, you know, if that does help. But just from our perspective, I'm really getting to know some students a lot better than I had in the past when we meet in big groups, but now because I have this one-on-one with them, I'm going to have that chance then senior year to say, oh, you said that you wanted to go into the apprenticeship. Have you called anyone yet? Can we make a contact there for you? And kind of get those things going. And I know we are looking at somewhere eventually down the line, even maybe doing freshman, you know, meeting. And I know that's a ways away yet, but just to have that contact too. Does that?
When you meet us or speak with a student who is unsure, doesn't know, are you beginning to lay ideas for them, open up different directions that they had not thought about? And then another part, I talk with young people, they don't know what they're going to do. They're juniors, some even senior. And I always responded, that's okay. Keep looking. You may not know. You may go into college not having a direction, and that's okay. I don't like to see them going with a lot of anxiety, because I think that is a perfect path to be in. So I like to see this, and maybe I'm wrong, that lay new ideas for them. Is that something that you're doing with your young people?
I would say a part, you know, part of that career interest inventory, it gives them ideas of where their skills are and what things that, the one on the plan, the one on the plan test, it goes for a series of questions, I like to do this, I don't like to do this, or I'm indifferent to it. So based on things that they say they like to do, it gives them career clusters of ideas that would match according to what they say they would like to do. So sometimes when kids come in and say, oh, I have no idea what I want to do, we'll kind of pull them out and say, well, you know, here's some areas of strengths for you. You know, does anything in here kind of maybe sound like that might be the direction you would want to go? And some students still sit there and say, no, I don't know. You know, but then some say, oh, well, maybe, you know, I do have skill sets in these areas, and then they can explore those. And that's part of what we do during our career units, is have the students actually go on and learn about different areas and likes and interests that they have.
I would answer also that some students, when you're talking and they don't know what they want to do, a lot of them, at least they feel they're at best than average students, that they don't know where their strengths are. And for some of them, their strengths really aren't in English, math, science, or social studies. So the conversation may turn to, what do you like to do? And that might be part of the interest inventory. It might be some of the sports they're doing. God forbid, it could be video games, but they all have something they're good at. We just don't always get to see it for seven hours we have them at school. So it's our job to investigate. What are you doing that you have a good time at? What are you, what are you doing that you really enjoy doing? And once you can find that, then you can start to steer them in a direction. And the new, we talk about career clusters, so instead of saying, you're going to be a nurse, well, you're going into maybe some health fields. So maybe you don't become a nurse, maybe you become a doctor. Maybe you become a CNA.
Or pharmacist.
Yes. Many different things. We're not closing the door on any of those other things, we're just saying, this is an area of interest.
I've just been pointing out about video games. I read an article the other day that the Air Force, for the first time, trained more pilots to sit at a console and fly a drone halfway around the world than they did real pilots. So some kids are learning skills that actually might be useful for things like that. I have a question about the post-graduation monitoring. It's actually came up in other contexts in the past on one way, you're trying to figure out, you know, is the curriculum helping students? You went into science, you went into English literature, did what you do at Wauwatosa East or West, preparing for that? And are you coordinating efforts with the curriculum to find out those kinds of things? Is it a joint effort? It seems like that would be really helpful for what you're doing and what they're doing.
I guess the first thing I would tell you is we want to see that when they leave here, do they have an idea? That's the first thing we want to see, and that would be maybe within a couple of years. Are you leaving with a path? And then, maybe a couple of years after, did you follow that path? You know, again, are you a pharmacist instead of a doctor? You know? And yes, that is something we want to do. I'd ask for just a bit of patience. It's going to take us a little while to coordinate that, but it is something that's on our radar. It's something at the end of assessing what we're doing here over the next four years that we are going to do.
I can imagine a student, like, three years into a college career, and say, oh, I really was well-prepared to do this, or I wish I had done this in high school, because that might have, you know, that might have really helped me. So I know down the line, that's going to be really helpful. One other comment I have, is I've been taking a greater and greater interest in struggling students. And there are a lot of students that start getting behind the elementary school, and they get further behind by middle school, and they're just stuck in having a miserable time. How can this model help that? In the elementary schools, can you be like the overreaching person that follows those students and helps those students? Or how is that, how could that fit into that kind of problem?
I think with this model, because it does, we're there for all students, so we're there for the struggling students as well. And there's three main domains, career academic and personal social, that we have standards and benchmarks on. And so, you know, again, the tier-one intervention is addressing those academic issues in the classroom. And I've done lessons in the classroom on how you learn, what's your learning style. Classes on study skills, teaching them based on your learning style, here's some different things you may want to try. And so, giving them different tools like that across the board. And looking at in kindergarten, what studies, you know, what academic work do we want to do there? And in first grade, and in second, and have it built. So there's that. And then there's the individual work that you do, as well as group work, where if you've got a group of struggling students, you know, working with them on organization and, you know, things like that. And working with their parents, which is another key component, because it's one thing for me to spend, you know, fifteen minutes with Johnny helping him organize, it's another thing for me to spend thirty minutes with his mother, get her on the page, and then there's more consistency and, you know, increased communication between parents and school. So those are just a few things, you know.
I mean, it seems like it might be beneficial, because when students move onto a new class, you know, a new teacher has to deal with that and try to bring that student along as best they can.
Right.
Perhaps having that person in the school, following that person from grade to grade, they pick up the school.
Absolutely.
We're kind of that loop. I know when I was at Whitten Middle School, or I was before I went to Eisenhower, knowing that child, and I could help communicate with the teacher, well, last year, this is what I knew about him. You know, you have seventh grade teachers or eighth grade teachers, this is what works with him. Kind of that connector wire.
Passing that information on from fifth grade to the middle school, to the counselors and the social workers there, so that, you know, those kids don't fall into the trap.
The board members?
Two questions. The first one has to do with the fifth grade, eighth grade, eleventh grade conferences. And I'm wondering if you could give us just a little bit more information about what's happening with those this year, how's that going to change next year, and then how's it going to change after that? At some point in time, I know parents are going to be involved. It sounds like maybe we're not quite there yet. If I'm a parent of a fifth grader, or an eighth grader, or an eleventh grader, when should I start to be listening to hear that those types of conferences are going to be happening with my students? Just give us a few details.
Well, I can speak to middle school. This year, we're piloting approximately seventy-five of our eighth graders. Next year, we're going to do the whole eighth grade, and the year after, parents will be invited. And, you know, we will have communication throughout, before the conferences, months and months ahead, that this is coming. At the elementary level at Eisenhower, I've been teaching some career exploration and other activities about themselves. In all three fifth grades, we're going to be working through how you would present this to your parent. I will be inviting one classroom of parents to come to listen to their child do their individual learning plan. If there's other parents in the other two grades that ask, I will meet with them. But then next year, it would be all of the parents of their grade would have the appointment or opportunity.
We sent letters home, like all the juniors with their time that they were, their conference was signed for. So we've done a number of items, a portion were in summertime when they.
So that's even happening this year?
Yes.
For current year?
We aim for eighty percent of our juniors this year.
Most of us look like ninety.
Yeah. Yeah, we got our eighty. We can aim for a hundred the year after and then involve parents. We've gone around in some meetings about when to involve parents, so, you know, feeling comfortable saying one that much.
I think with, with the model, part of the conferences is kind of like one of these to-dawn moments of some work compiled over time. So during that pilot year, you don't have several years of work compiled. So our position has been, it's really a student conference, and giving those students the opportunity as we develop the tools that were helping the students to kind of prepare for those conferences. So our emphasis has been, let the students have the opportunity to present at a conference to an adult. I know at one building, I got a call and asked if I would come and be the adult to listen to some of the conferences for students. Again, going back to, it's a student conference, and in a couple of years, I believe that our belief is that we'll have more information that's valuable and over time, so that we can have a better, I guess, more meaningful conference to present to them. Does that make sense?
The other question I wanted to ask has to do with the, the actual curriculum that you can develop. I'm not sure of the best way to ask this question, but you use the phrase, or the phrase was used, crosswalk curriculum. I'm trying to understand that a little bit more. Are some of the components, in any event, some of the components of the student services curriculum, present that as a standalone? Or are you working with some of the other? Or are you working with some of the other regular subject matters, such as studies of English?
A little bit of both.
Or is it both?
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. And we have not undertaken any curriculum development as of yet. We've looked at our current curriculum that's been in place, that we've had in the district, primarily second step at the elementary level, as well as when we reference crosswalks. If you look at, what we worked on this year was a definition of standards and benchmarks for guidance. And we identified the K-12 standards and benchmarks. Now what we're doing is we're looking at where are those standards and benchmarks being met through our existing curriculum? When we talk about crosswalks, that's what they're referencing. So we've been involved in that process. We still have some more work to do in that process. I know one of our activities that we want to continue to work on this summer and into next year is, now that we know we've identified elementary careers as a gap, middle schools careers as a gap, then let's start having a conversation about, now we need to talk about additional curriculum. We had some counselors that were able to attend the statewide conference recently, and a district in our area has, had last year received one of the grants that we're currently trying to pursue. And as part of that grant, they have developed a tremendous amount of curriculum centered around careers. And a part of the grant requires them to start with any district that asks. So we've asked, and we're getting, so our whole, so that will, you know, benefit from the twenty thousand dollar savings and the work of this other district can be able to start to look at that stuff and see how it might fit into where our gaps are. So we haven't gone through any of the new development processes. We still are at that process of saying, we've now got real targets, so how are we going to meet them? And, you know, Lynn was sharing a story earlier today about how she was walking into the hall of the school and saw something about, just some studying that was going on at the third grade level. You know, I think in the past with our student services model, we kind of look at that and we'd see that activity where they were timelineing and be like, wow, that's kind of career, she should have been involved in it. But now Lynn looked at that right away, was like, wow, I didn't know they do this. You know, she's new to her building, I didn't know that they did this in the third grade. I know now that I can start catching and being a part of that. So again, we have some targets, and now we're looking at how we can help classroom teachers that are currently engaging in some activities, help us work with them to meet our targets.
And as another example, I'm talking with a librarian, and one of her targets for fifth grade is for them to publish her career brochure. You know, she could pick anything, and, you know, this year she's doing it in the States. And I talked to her about it, because one of my goals for my students with their individual learning plan is for them to research a career and create a brochure. So next year, she and I are going to team up and have us kill two birds with one stone.
And Children's Hospital, we had a bowling curriculum, which some of the teachers were touching on. So I took the initiative, Children's Hospital gave me access, and the fifth graders went through the program. And we did a pre-test, post-test, and a summary, which they're going to give me, which then I can share with the rest of the elementary counselors to say, this is something you might want to look into. We're out, they're also giving us a pre-trial with their mission health, which is prevention and obesity. So that's K through three, so I'm going to start that next week. Same thing, that will evaluate and see how the teachers, who'd like it. Great program.
Thank you, this was very important, and I know I have a lot to learn as well. I'm very excited about what you're doing. And I know we talked a lot about career and academic. Tonight, could you tell me a little more about personal and social? Because that can really affect career and academic and how you get involved in that. And what example is tardiness, or either a student being bullied, or a student bullying? You know, different behaviors that have, you know, how do you, how do you help with that?
Well, we go into the classroom, into classroom guidance on those kinds of issues. I've done, I can't remember how many friendships I've had with students. So, you know, groups of two to five kids at a time, as well as talking to a lot of parents. And this week, I'm going to try something new, and some of our fifth grade, some of our fifth grade girls are doing a lot of girl aggression. And been trying all kinds of things all year with them, meeting with parents individually, meeting with the girls in group. And I'm actually having all the parents come in and meet with me and at the same time, and sort through some things, get everybody on the same page, and bring the girls in as a show of solidarity and so that we can get some of this under control before we send them to Whitten. But all different kinds of strategies depending on the situation. Attendance meetings for students who have either been tardy or absent for fifteen times. They get a letter that says that they have to meet with me or the principal. And through those conversations with the parents, I've, we've done a lot of problem solving together. And, you know, working with students who have illnesses that keeps them out of school, and how we have staff, working with the teachers, you know, that when the parent calls you for homework, send stuff home, you know, even if it's different than what you did that day. And they're only in kindergarten, send it home. They create those good habits and those good patterns.
And I think at the middle school, it's, we go into the classroom and do activities, and then we do individual as needs come up.
More responsive to, say, a pattern that you might be seeing or something that might come to you from the administration or a teacher or something like that?
That we do also, like in our academic lab. It's a smaller number of kids, they get to know each other, and so they sometimes get to know each other too well, and they, they were bullying each other. And so the academic lab, people asked me to come in and do, and I went in and did several lessons with kids. So it goes, it comes from all different areas.
I think when you look at those categories, there were nine themes that we had chosen that we feel our students need to have strength in. And we will be looking at curriculum to enforce that in the personal and social area. What do our, what's up and stuck is just one, we need, you know, another intervention, prevention of personal and social things that we would need K five.
Something that I've noticed in my work with the student services people is, as they do some work in their buildings, I see lots of conversations across the buildings and K-12 about, you know, whether it's a fifth grade group of girls or some kids needing some social services, this is really good collaboration and sharing of ideas. And that's something I typically didn't often see in the past. I think that, you know, they, individuals work in their buildings, and while they may on occasion come to each other, we just didn't have that platform. And through our student services model and professional learning communities, we've had that out there to really share and, I think, be more proactive in some of our activities. So it's been nice to see, to see some of that emphasis on personal, social being kind of more global for all kids. Because I think, you know, we recognize all kids need it at some point.
And that's where the advisory committee will come in, should get an administrator, parents, and some counselors. But they would bring a perspective to say, did you think about that? Maybe this issue could be, you know, intervening or prevention towards that we might not be aware of.
All right, we need to find an issue in any, in one of these categories. It could be, you know, the permeate through everything, so.
Right.
Again, it's quite exciting. And I guess as we move along here, you'll have to think about, are you able to reach every student that you're charged with reaching? And how can we help you do that? I see your position as a key role in student achievement and education, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, tonight I'm really grateful that we can have a thoughtful conversation without political posturing various directions for people trying to resist transfer to other job assignments. It allows me to say what I'm about to say and I'm more comfortable saying it. I like what I hear, that you're proactively reaching out to all students. I don't need, for my personal thoughts tonight, in defense of what you're doing, I do, however, have sincere reservations, or it sort of remains to be seen, that the at-risk students are any less needy than they were before. And it seems our world is a more difficult world now, and it seems that there, we may have more at-risk students in more at-risk situations than what we used to have. So, and the loss of social worker time is a little bit scary to me because of those things. And we know we have so many kids in difficult situations where they don't have enough to eat and various other things. They don't have money to participate in activities that we know promote success. On the flip side of that is the idea that the fact that you are in an organized fashion, reaching out to all students, that you're more likely to find people who are at risk and with problems that you may not have been aware of before. So if you were to come to us later and say, you know what? We've, we've found some more adverse situations that we just didn't see before because of how we're doing things. And maybe some things we need to tune or adjust, that would speak very well of you. And all of the appropriate enthusiasm for what you're doing. You know, it's equally appropriate that you'll gain experience from this and come back to us with some adjustments if there weren't. Just to say, don't get so invested in what you said tonight that you think you, you have to keep doing it exactly like you're doing it. That made some sense, what I'm saying. I know you don't want to lose any kids, and I know you won't. I'm convinced this program will help assure that you don't lose any kids. But now what will you do with the problems that you uncover? Because that kid who comes and talks about his academics, oh, by the way, this happened to be at home last night, you know, or something like that. And so we're all in this together, so let us know if you see something that you didn't anticipate. So we can all try to work to solve what you find.
Yes, question twelve, and on the same train, you know, allocation. Is every second grade classroom receiving the same amount of time when the counselor in the classroom, say, quoting? And how much time is that?
At this time, we're right now in the process of difference because we have, the way that we allocate the resources is that there's some of the buildings that were identified as building of higher needs, even though there's less numbers, they have more FTEs. So there was some deliberate intention to give some specific higher needs buildings more allocation. So is it equal at every grade level, at every building? No. One of the things we're going to look at at the end of the year, since the data that we're reflecting is, in regard to that, we're, was looking at first of all the curriculum. You know, one of the things we go to is second step. How far along was each classroom able to move through that curriculum in their, in their classroom? And is it same for both second grade classes in one building? Or is there some disparity so that then we can respond to that?
So how many approximately second grade classrooms do get a weekly service from in-classroom?
Sure. It's not weekly, it's about twice a month. And this year in my building, it was offered to all classrooms to sign up with me twice a month. And most teachers did. There were a handful that didn't. I look at this year as trying to figure things out, see what works, see what doesn't. So this year, even though I had to send about twelve follow-up emails, trying to get teachers to sign up voluntarily for me to come into their classrooms, I didn't barge down the door for that handful that didn't, if that makes sense.
And you're at Eisenhower?
Madison.
Madison, okay.
So that should, that's going to look very different.
Yeah, and my question would be, does Jefferson have the same opportunity? Does Wilson have the same opportunity? Do they have a Lynn? At the beginning year that came in and said, I'm going to beat her twice as long than anybody who wants me in their classroom. Right, right, those resource.
Yes, right now, the way that, the way that it's being, for this first year, with kind of change in service delivery and being a first year of pilot, each building kind of handled it with, this is how we're going to go about it. I think that after we get some data about how well it worked and how it really fleshed out and how important it is, going back to what Lynn said, I think that we can be more directive in our approach next year too versus just offering, I mean, a new person in a building making an offer versus building administration, as well as myself, saying, this person will be a part of this. So it's a work in process. It's not as, it's not as consistent as I would like it to be. I anticipate over time we're consistent.
Because I, I mean, it seems to me we're talking more people, more, more resources.
That's why we applied for a grant.
But, but each building does have a, elementary either has a full-time social worker or a full-time counselor, which the elementaries did not have. You had a half-time social worker, that's it, for most buildings, but majority.
And, you know, my only point is we're, we're looking at some really exciting things.
Yeah.
Opportunities and, you know, can we start catching some things earlier? And yeah, hopefully we can, but I don't see at the level that we're at now, we're going to be able to do that, so, you know.
Yeah, it's tough, Mary Jo, it definitely is tough. It is a challenge. We've got some hardworking people that make it their purpose every day and are doing an outstanding job. And I think that.
Oh, yeah, and you know, the thing is, this is, this is something we can affect.
Yeah.
This is something we can do in a way of support. As if we know resources are needed, you know, that's something we can do to be part of this. So I think I feel really strongly that all of the work that everybody's doing, all of this training, all of the sharing of information, you know, all of this time you're spending getting to know people and work with people, it has to be backed up. So then, let me put that into a measurement perspective. So I'll say the boards would like to see, or you would like to see, every student touched by a counselor and their family have an individual learning plan. If that's what we would like, what would it take to do that? Can you do it today? Yes or no? If you could do it, you know, six months from now, what would it be like? A year from now, what would it be like?
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, that's a good question. I think that can we do it today with the resources we have? I believe we can, but if that's where the focus is going to be, there's always that give to get, and, you know, everybody's strapped. I mean, it's just, that's a reality of as we all work hard and part of it. But I know the individuals behind it, so I know the individuals that are out there every day doing it will say, yes, they can do it. Is it a challenge? And sometimes if their, if the focus is there, what, kind of going back to what Mr. Meyer was saying, is, is there something that you're missing? And it's a time balancing tool. And again, that's why we're pursuing for grants, because I, you know, obviously, yes, quantity makes it more, when you have more, you're more likely to be able to bring more to the table. But beyond just quantity is quality, and I really believe in the quality of the department. And I've felt that all along, which is kind of where I always started from, saying, let's look at the current people we have and the student services we currently have, because there is a lot of talent and a lot of quality there. And you can do an awful lot with one counselor in a building, or you can have two full-time houses in a building, and if they weren't effective in a job, it means, do you know what I'm saying? So I don't know if I know, I didn't answer your question.
I don't want to trade off.
It's been challenging.
Right, if, if having every student have an individual learning plan means we can't spend more time with half the students, no, I mean, I'd like to have it all.
So do I, yeah, so do we.
And that's our mission, reaching every student.
And I also want to, you know, I, I think the role of student services is, is that, certainly that front line of touching all students is, and obviously that tier two intervention. But that tier two isn't just on their shoulders. I mean, I, I think that some of our buildings do really well is, we do have, I, I look at some of the things that are happening in some of the buildings where you know that there are some kids that have unique needs. And it's not necessarily the student services person that you. services person that's responding to meeting all these needs. They may be the ones that are looking for the resources in the building, but, you know, the principal can be your mentor. Like I said, I'm, I've been asked to come and do some of the conferences with kids because they're the ones that know, okay, I got to reach out, and this is where I got to look for the resources. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're the day-to-day provider of everything.
You asked if we can have every kid have an ILP, as we have staffing right now? Yes. What got lost? I mean, I, I give a black history program. There's probably a couple of things I could have done better, but we are, can we get, can we reach 100% of them? You get them all to come to school, and we'll get 100% of them. The ones I have the biggest problem with are the ones where attendance issues, and I can't solve that problem tonight or by myself. But yeah, I think we can get nearly 100% of the kids near our school. And my hope personally is with connection with those students and knowing that their plan, it's important. It's important to them, it's valid, it's worthwhile, then they become accountable. They become accountable to the relationship they've created, and a lot of our students, they have teachers, but they don't all connect to someone in the building. And that's just, this is just one more way. And once I have that conference with them, there's a number of students, well, there's a ton of students that I know better now because of doing junior conferences. So the impact is, it's unknown, but you asked a question, yes, we can meet them all. We can know them all.
Anything for the board members?
Sure.
Mr. Meyer?
Just to, just, technology guy can't run a microphone. I never needed to see a plan from you all. I, I never needed to see all kinds of organization. I knew you had enough of that. What is exciting about what you are is that you're a thinking, collaborating body of professionals who are determined to go and reach every child. And if, the point of my earlier comment was that if you don't come to us in a year and say you found something you didn't anticipate, well, I can't believe that will happen, you know? And so, you know, I think we're moving towards an administrative model where we have, where we will have a data analyst, or that might be in the works, you know? So you have a data czar, and that data person will hold things up to you about, you know, are you reaching all the kids? Are you balanced from school to school? You all shouldn't really so much have to worry about that. You know, when those truths get held up to you, you'll go, oh, yeah, we need to refocus some emphasis. What you all, Stephen and me, are about is you are the professionals in, you know, psychology and social work and counseling, and you need to be that and collaborate and talk, which is what you're doing, and, and not march the party line. So if something in the plan doesn't work out, that's fine, you know, as far as I'm concerned. So this is really great. Just please remember that it's a, you know, it, it doesn't have to be any certain thing. Just, and this is the first time we've had, like, let me see if I can count eight, you know, seven, eight people come to us as a body and say, we're a collaborating group and a community, and this is what we're going to do. And that's a completely different thing from what we've ever had before in my time here. So I only want to say positive things, and the rest I'm sure you'll figure out with the concerns we had, like the at-risk kids, you probably will find more because you're reaching more kids. And then you're going to come, have to come back to us and say, we need resources, what do we do? And that will not be an embarrassment, that will be a success.
Anything for the board members?
Just, I think the board will be hearing something shortly about additional staffing positions in the very near future in relation to student services to address some of the things that they talked about in the format, give more support to their efforts. It's an awesome group, and they do great things, so thank you.
Is there any community comment on this portion of the student services report? Please come up to the microphone, if you could. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Brogan, I was in Lanning to talk, but as I was listening to you guys, it's just so great what you're doing and what I'm seeing. And the one thing that jumped out at me was that when you were talking about the career paths and all of the ways to reach the kids, have you thought or talked at all about the different activities? Because there are so many activities at the middle school especially, but at the high school, where kids can discover something that they didn't know about themselves, and that might also launch, you know, some of the ideas that they didn't know they had before. Have you talked about some of the leaders of the activities?
Certainly.
How that could fit into what you have as part of the plan?
It's part of the plan.
Yeah, because I think this is a huge opportunity, that with all the stuff that the kids are involved in, and, you know, that's where they're going to see what their passions are maybe outside of the classroom. That's just the one thought that I have. We don't really think that.
Thank you. There is no further hearing comments. Thank you all very much for coming in. It was exciting to hear about this, and I'm really proud to hear more as the implementation continues. So thank you very much.
Can I just say one more thing, Mrs. Hee? I just want to say thank you to this team that came here. They put this together, this was all theirs, and I thank them for their work as well as their colleagues who they're representing. This is a really deliberate effort to have some K-12 east-west representation, so I think it's nice reflection of the model. And I also want to thank the board for your support for this as well, because it has brought with it some challenges that I do believe all along, easily to set for kids, and it's nice to get home to the tradition. So I thank all of our student services staff in the Wauwatosa District for their work in actually putting it into action.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next slide, continuation of student services reports. This type of topic is open enrollment, after due to waiting and student transfers.
And is it going to change in the car, like, if that's okay? Please sit down, please, pass that. Yes. Is that happening? Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm here to share with you information in regard to our open enrollment, our chapter 320 and our inter-district transfer work that we're currently underway in the student services office. I want to also, I want to just put a shout out for the senior administrative assistants who make this happen. There's three people in my department, Corinne Surley, Debbie Hoppy, and Kimberly Purcell, who, this becomes their life for a big part of February, and that's just the beginning. So they have just done an outstanding, stellar job. Technology has helped support our efforts this year, so people are able to come in, and so I believe that we had a really friendly experience with families that came from our district to pursue open enrollment in chapter 220. So I just want to thank them for their efforts to make that, so. Open enrollment was held in February, February 1st through 19th was the enrollment, was the enrollment period, and during that time, like I did say, this was the first year that you could apply for open enrollment online. So we had a total of 1,412 applicants for students that are interested in attending the Wauwatosa School District in grades early childhood through grade 12. The next slide is just a summary of the applications and where they come from. Wauwatosa is where the majority of the applications come from, and then a variety of other districts in the area, and some maybe even a little further from the area. Those are where the students are currently attending school. The next slide is the grade level summary, and it has a breakdown of the amount of applicants for each grade. I do want to, in that, in that initial number of 1,000, 1,412, that does include our students that are currently here under tuition waivers, that would include in that number. So this grade level breakout also includes our students that are currently attending our school district under a tuition waiver. Students who are enrolled in the Wauwatosa School District but move out during the school year, kind of apply for tuition waivers, continue in the district. So these, they are included in this number. Of the applicants, our policy provides preference to applicants that currently have siblings in the district, so this is where we have sibling preference. So our first lottery that we do, when we do our actual lottery, is siblings of current students. So these are the grades that we currently have siblings in, in our school district. And then the next slide is those students that are currently attending our district via a tuition waiver. We also have some students that currently reside in Wauwatosa and have applied to attend schools out of districts. We received a total of 103 applications from other districts, where students had applied to attend school in a different district. That was from 87 students. So students can apply for up to three schools, so we had a total of 87 students apply for that for a total of 103 applications. And here's a summary of where, where they're applying to attend. So obviously, some of them that are further away may be attending a virtual, may be an application to attend a virtual school. So these are our existing students that are applying to attend school in a different Of the 87 students who applied to leave Wauwatosa, this is just a breakdown of those students. 27 of them are currently attending a private or appropriate school or daycare. None of them reported being enrolled as a homeschool student. Currently, 17 are currently attending school in which they requested. So they're currently enrolled in a school under a tuition waiver, just like students that live in Wauwatosa and move out, continue in our district under a tuition waiver. We have 17 students that are attending school in a different district under a tuition waiver that are requesting to stay in that district. 16 of the students did not report anything on their application, so we have no information about them. And 25 of them are currently enrolled in the Wauwatosa Public Schools, and three of them are currently attending virtual school. This is where the students requested to go. There were 17 that requested, 17 applications requesting an opportunity to attend a virtual school. There were 17 that requested an opportunity to attend an MPS specialty school. And then 17 students requested a school that they're already attending, so again, those are tuition waiver students. And then 52 of the students requested this other school district's general education We also have currently, we're at that point in the chapter 220 process where students are completing applications to attend chapter 220 and attend in Wauwatosa Public Schools. We had a total of 16 students apply to attend Wauwatosa Public School through the chapter 220 program. We just did receive notification that 10 of those students have been approved to attend their school. Some of those students also applied for open enrollment, not all of them, but some of them also applied for open enrollment, so there is some crossover of those students. And then all those applications, 13 of them attend, are applied to attend a language immersion school, one for the Martha School of the Arts, one for the Montessori High School, one for McDowell Montessori. And then 16 of, of the 16 students, three are currently in an MPS, in an MPS school under chapter 220 and requesting a different school. The final information I want to share with you tonight is just about our intra-district transfer. These are the students that are currently enrolled in our schools that are pursuing an opportunity to attend a different school in Wauwatosa. We processed 37, today we processed 37 requests for intra-district transfers, and 32 of those have been approved. Those are the students that currently, that live in McKinley but have the opportunity to go to Whitman, even though Long School is their homeschool, because West will be their high school, so we have approved those. That's language at center policy. Five of those students have been denied already because of the knowledge that there isn't space. And then we currently have 33 requests at the elementary level for, to attend a school outside, or a school different from the one that they're currently enrolled in. Just in general, I wrote down just some of the things that are included when people make requests. Obviously, the transfer from Longfellow to Whitman because students will be attending West. Sometimes the request is due to a sibling attending a transfer school. Sometimes siblings get split either through open enrollment or through family moves, where you may have a family that lives in one, in one elementary school boundary, for example, lives in the Washington area, and they move to the Roosevelt area. The Washington student would be allowed to stay, we have our policy, but they would actually have to apply for any new children. So just for them to be able to get siblings together, that's a frequent request. Sometimes you get the request because it's more convenient. Often we'll have a lot of families that request to attend Eisenhower or Lincoln because they have an older sibling, and it's easier versus if they're at a further away school like Madison or Jefferson, for example. Sometimes you see on the application, it's an attempt to resolve a conflict, either a starving student, a social problem, or sometimes families don't like the teachers, and that will be included on the application. This year, we, there was one that, there was a reference to a school culture, that they prefer a school culture at a different building. Taking a high school class at East, attending summer school at East, or attending summer school at Longfellow, we've seen that on applications. Family plans on moving into the East boundary, that was written on an application. And then, once we start getting to that time of the year when class assignments and information about class size comes out, we'll start getting requests that reference, that they're making requests because of the teacher assignment that was provided to them at their neighborhood school, or that the class size would be different at the school that they're trying to get to. So we frequently have seen that in the past, it's not uncommon. We have administrative procedures that are in place currently, they're, they're with Niola, we've been working with Niola on policy, they've approved their policy, but they're working with us on procedures. We've defined elementary, middle school, and high school procedures. One of the goals of that was ensure consistent practices. Previously and historically, the way that intra-district transfers were handled was they would start in the building and then come to student services. What we changed is they're all coming right to student services, so that you tend to have some discrepancy over how our principal was understanding or choosing to pursue those. Things that are in the administrative procedures is sibling preference. It's very much aligned with some of the open enrollment language. Intra-district transfers are given priority over open enrollments, so before we would add an open enrollment where there was space, if there was an intra-district transfer request, that would be granted before we put open enrollment students in there. We always have to review for space when we're talking about special education needs and English language learners, and then continuing in a current school. Again, if families move into a different boundary area, the language allows them to continue within the current student, family makes that decision. As far as the notification for the transfers, we're going to use a very similar system to the open enrollment, lottery and waiting list type model. The intra-district transfers request will process them during the first two weeks of April, going through the requests that we currently have, and then keeping a waiting list of other requests. We'll do them before, like I explained, we'll do, any intra-district transfers will be reviewed before we start filling open enrollment seats. And then the letters of approval or denial will be mailed by April 9, 2010.
Just wanted to piece of data that relates to both of those, the intra-district transfer and open enrollment. As of today, with current enrollment projections, we have 21 seats open throughout the district, SK through 12th grade, by using ours as our standard. So there's 21, only 21, I guess, which is, is good news, good news from this point in time, as far as resident enrollment goes, is up, I think, up high. But that does not include JK, and JK, we tend to wait a little bit longer as those enrollments tend to come in a little bit later.
If there are any additions? Board members, Mr. Meyer?
Dr. Earl, the 21 seats opened. How do we count the secondary school seats that we opened in the last spring? Are we going to refill those as kids graduate, or are we assuming those, that was a one-time opening?
That was a one-time opening with the intent to maintain that number, so there may be an additional request if we come back to the board to maintain that allocation if we have open seats as we determine. After we fill the April seats, take a look at where we're at with numbers, and then come back to the board to take care of that same situation as last year, without adding additional students above and beyond what we did last year.
So I'll try to parrot what you said, so we see what we're understanding. We will seek to maintain current levels in the high school, but not seek to add additional chairs or open enrollment kids in the high school.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Making progress?
I guess I want some, could you use some clarification on this statement where you have intra-district transfer requests with the given priority of new and open enrollment seats, and how that relates to high school transfers? I have received questions from union members that wondered, you know, why they weren't allowed to transfer from one high school to another, but yet open enrollment students are added to a high school. So, is this also applying at the high school level, or?
Well, there's a determination of whether there's space. And right now, using what we use for determining whether or not there's space at the high school is the class size. For an intra-district transfer, our policy and administrative guidelines indicate that the, the way that the language is written, it talks about larger school and smaller school, and if class size is less, or if the difference is between 100. So, it's a, that's how it would be, that's how it would be determined if there was space. So, if you would get within the two schools having enrollment within 100, then we would look to the intra-district transfers.
According to this statement, let's say we were going to add 50 open enrollment students to each high school, we'd make that decision. Does that mean that resident students would be allowed to apply and have preference for those positions before the open enrollment students would be put in?
We don't have, we don't have any seats open. The only way it would happen is what we did last year when we looked at it one time to add open enrollment for financial reasons. But when the number's at 23, and we staffed 25, there's not, there won't be open enrollment students at a high school level.
Okay, so I'm still asking a what-if question. Didn't that, if we were adding open enrollment students to each high school, and we had determined there were a certain number of seats, does that mean that we would allow students to transfer and give them preference over the open enrollment seats according to this intra-district transfer statement?
That would have to be made as a, that's not relation, it doesn't have any relationship to that. That would have to be board action outside of policy that we have right now. So, if we were, if we brought a recommendation to add students to the high school level, or if the board wanted that as a recommendation, then it would be up to the board to decide how that would play out. Because current policy and the procedures put in place, we can't add open enrollment.
Yeah, that's sort of my question. So, the current policy would supersede this question about intra-district transfers getting precedence over open enrollment at the high school. The policy override?
Right.
Right. In, in our current administrative procedures for the high school transfer, the specific language is around if, if the enrollment between the two high schools comes within 100, then intra-district transfers would be considered. And there's actually, in that language, there, there's some information about how seniors would get first dibs, juniors would get second chance at that. So, there's actually, that language is in, that actually is in that actual administrative procedure for high school level, for high school level students. But as far as the, the open enrollment, if the board would make a decision that 50 students would be added to each high school, and 50 students would be added to each high school because the board sets that.
Okay. I can just see residents thinking that if we were to add 25 students to each high school, open enrollment students, that 25 resident students could choose to transfer if they don't have precedence, and then open enrollment students would go to West. But you're saying that the policy?
Yeah, even if we, if we get within 100, we're still not going to be taking open enrollment students in the district transfers. Then this almost becomes, because it's just intra-district transfer. If there's a request at that point in time, still wouldn't be taking open enrollment because we'd be around 23.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
Did you see, you're working on administrative procedures now for intra-district?
They're in place. You know, just like with our policy process, we sent all of our policies to Neola, and right now, all of our administrative procedures are in Neola. We did develop administrative procedures for any of our policies that require them, and this was a policy that required them enrollment, required them. We put them in place and we're using it.
Mr. Maher?
I, I'll say this very clearly because living on the West side in the West District, I do get inquiries from residents where it's clear there's been this understanding about our open enrollment policies. So, to be very clear, there, we do not transfer residents from West High School to East High School at this time, and that, that just doesn't happen unless there's some very, you know, small exceptions. So, regardless of the questions that were asked tonight, we are not moving residents from West High School to East High School and then replacing them with open enrollment kids in West High School. The resident students are staying in their respective high school districts. Is that, that's accurate?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
If there's no other board questions or comments?
Beth Fredericson, 7927 Warren Avenue. I know you're not making decisions on open enrollment tonight, but I'm here so I'll get my two cents in. I would encourage the board to look at last year as truly a one-time opportunity to meet a financial gap for open enrollment at the secondary level, and not fill seats that come open due to graduating seniors. One of our distinctives as a district, and I think it's been a positive for us, is to take open enrollment students at the elementary grades and keep them for the duration if they want to stay. And that's good for them, and that's good for us. And I don't mean to minimize the very real financial problems, but they're not going to go away. And so, continuing to look to open enrollment to always solve them might not be in our best long-term interest. And the height, taking new kids at the high school level, new students at the high school level, on an ongoing basis, I think, might create some unintended consequences for us that we just want to be aware of. So, as you think about this, and like the report you received tonight, and the decisions you'll be making in the near future, I would advocate for holding the current seats we have at the high school level, and letting them shrink with every graduating year until we're back to a place where we're taking only open enrollment students at the elementary level like we used to. Thank you.
Just if I can clarify, the intention wouldn't be to add, to replace those students necessarily at the high school level. We'll, we'll replace them in open seats, not necessarily just at the high school, or not necessarily at the high school level. So, if somebody graduates, it's maintaining the number of students, not necessarily the number at high school, middle school, and elementary. Because I think we clearly recognize that the best method is to have these open enrollment students here for the longest possible period of time.
Can I give you a quick, briefly? I'm not sure I understand that. So, are you talking about the overall number of seats? Maintain the overall number of seats, which means opening new seats at other levels? For the entire district? The overall number of seats for the entire district?
Not the overall for the entire district, the overall for the number that we had last year for the financial reason. But, the way it was put, the way we did it last year, will look different how those, how that number is maintained. I'd be happy to.
Thank you. I need a cup of coffee or something.
Is there any further community comment? Thank you very much, Mr. Maher. If there's something to the superintendent's report?
Mr. Price is here this evening to share an update on, I'll wrap the technology, and I'll be back toward the end of the school year to share the technology plan with us
It's been a while since I've, too long, come to the board.
What have you been doing?
We did a little piece.
Do you want to share where you were at in traffic in the morning, Mr. Price?
Where was I in traffic?
In between the 38-car pileup.
Oh, exactly, yeah, Monday.
Oh, no.
No, no, it wasn't, was it, it was Friday? Friday. Last Friday, yeah. I was about one minute behind the 38-car pileup, and one minute in front of the seven-car pileup that was behind me. That was, that was quite exciting. I didn't know what was going on at the time because I couldn't see. I could only see probably 20 foot in front of me anyway, so we found out about it later, sending Dr. Earl text messages from the car while I'm sitting still in the traffic. But I digress from tonight's subject. So, I'm here to give a technology services update. The last time I was here was probably a few months after the board had approved the investment in fiber optic cabling, the infrastructure overhaul, network servers, the phone systems, and so on. And at that point in time, it was really just a, yep, we're moving ahead, and here's where we're at. So, I've got a little bit more to report this time, about another six or eight months later. The first thing, I'm going to do it in two phases. Past initiative, so everything that we've invested in in the past, the status of those, and then things that we're working on moving forward. Okay, so the investments in 2009, everything was on time and within budget. I did, when, when I proposed the investment of the 1.2 million for phones, network infrastructure overhaul, and file servers, I did estimate that it would be an 80% local installation with a 20% outsourced requirement. We actually found that that came to about a 90% local installation. Only $20,000 was expended on outsourced fees, and probably 98% of that was related to the phone system. I did sit down and do some calculations based on the number of hours put into those projects, and the rates that I find acceptable are. So, I had two other vendors do the same thing. And if we had, if we had outsourced the majority of the projects that we did over the last year, the district would have spent an additional $180,000 on outsourced fees. Nothing like a little bit of self-promotion. Fiber was installed. That was the big thing that we spent a couple of years discussing and going backwards and forwards on. We settled on time-warner, and to date, the service has been excellent from them. The response times for data across the network, voice track across the network has been excellent. Everything for them was on time and in budget. They did meet old deadlines. The network infrastructure, which was all the switches, routers, and associated equipment on the inside, again, was on time and in budget. Performance is great from a network data transfer performance perspective. So, basically, we can sit at the furthest closet in Jefferson and talk to the furthest wiring closet in Madison in milliseconds, backwards and forwards, and they go up around through East, which actually means quite a lot. We'll talk about that in a bit. And again, everything was on time and in budget. Server infrastructure, which was another portion of that 1.3 million, which was collapsing all the file servers from all the schools, bringing them into the central location at East High School. That's been fully deployed. Excellent performance on there, massive amounts of consolidation. So, we no longer need dedicated file servers for each school. We can put all the student files on one server. We can put all the staff files on one server. We can rapidly deploy file servers. So, if we need a file server in a hurry, we can do it in 10 minutes prior to the server infrastructure overhaul that would take at least a day to do so. Performance again is great. I'll touch a little bit more on that in another section as we talk about network and logical performance. We have 31, this is, this is basically the virtualized environment. So, we have some pretty big file servers running at East, and when we want to bring up another file server, it's created virtually. It's not real. It's within the software application. School provides the services that you want, but it's not a physical box that you have to touch. To date, we have 31 file servers virtualized on there, and we have capacity to do, do a lot more. The phone system, fully deployed, all equipment is in place. There's actually quite a minimal learning curve to migrate to that new phone system. We did make sure that all shortcut keys, et cetera, that the regular end users used in the previous system, like three to delete and so on, were transposed into the new system. So, there was a minimal culture shock as people moved across. One thing we did find when we did that project was that there was next to no documentation for the old system that had existed for well in excess of a decade, which had, it's, which had good and bad parts to it. Obviously, the bad is that when you cut over, you obviously, you then get a lot of people that say, well, what about my 1234? Things that we didn't even know existed. The good part of that is, those things that we didn't know existed that weren't too good or beneficial to the district could not be reinstated. We definitely got some tighter controls on the phone systems. By default, long distance was disabled for everyone in the district, and they had to go through an approval process to get it. Little things like that that make the system better and make it more fiscally optimal for the district. Right now, we're beginning to exploit the features. So, the system's in place. People have got used to it. It's working well. It's proved itself. Now, we're starting to take advantage of all the little extras that are in there. In some of the schools, we've piloted to good success, having like panic buttons on the phones. So, you can set one number to be an emergency button, and then all the phones in the office ring with a specific dial tone. We're working on paging integration right now, and also enhanced 911 dialing, which is where if a user calls 911, it doesn't just give them the school, but it also gives them the room number, the user that called that, that number as well. So, give us, when that is enabled, when we finally got that turned out, that'll give us a much more rapid emergency services response capability. One of the ongoing problems, or constant problems in emergency services such as fire department, police department, ambulance services, et cetera, have is that somebody will call 911, and they'll know the building, but when they get to the school, because everybody's running around trying to deal with the emergency, when emergency services get there, they don't know where in the building that problem is. And it might take them an extra minute or two to find somebody that can identify the location. And as you know, in situations like that, an extra minute or two is actually quite important. Student information system. While ago, it migrated from SASE Power School. It's fully deployed, but since it has been implemented, there have been stability issues. The issues have come from the application program itself, and this is an admission by the vendor. They are putting everything they can into it. They have people from France working at the application level to try and get stability of this student information system more level. Right now, we're working on a, we have a workaround for it that requires manually intervention on a daily basis to avoid any crashing. And we're sort of at a standstill where, from a stability standpoint, we just have to plod along. We have to manually intervene daily, and it stays up until the vendor can get the issue resolved. Technically, it's called a bug in the software. I've been discussing the concerns and developing a support plan with the vendor because we have been quite dissatisfied because of that. Not so much with the application, okay? I've got to point that out. The application itself, and the student information system itself when it works, is actually very good. There's extremely beneficial customization capabilities in there. Testament to that is, the data manager recently created a centralized enrollment sheet. When a student would enroll at a school, normally it would take five or six different pages of information to get that student enrolled. All that was customized and brought into one location so that when somebody comes in, the administrative assistants can basically work the other page and they're done. In a much greater amount of time, or a much shorter amount of time, I should say. And plus, there are other little features in there where we can actually check the phone numbers to say, yes, this will be part of the emergency broadcast system that we have, or these are people that should receive notifications for all alert now messages, et cetera. So from that perspective, it's very good. Despite the stability issues, we've seen the majority, vast majority of staff really like Power School. It's just the stability that's been a problem. So I did have on here discussing concerns and developing plans. However, they knew that I was coming to the board tonight and called me probably 25 minutes prior to this board meeting. And I'm happy to say that not only have they presented to me, I have not yet received it in writing, that they have presented to me not only a development plan for support, but also some, what I would consider acceptable fiscal compensation for the grief that we've been through to make sure that we haven't paid for something that we haven't used. Let's see, next. Data mining system, which is sort of tied into that, still under development. Because of the stability issues we have with Power School, we have not been able to deploy that fully. But we do, now that we're at a point where with a manual intervention every day, we are quite stable. We are going to deploy that very soon. We have additional training planned, et cetera. The internet. That was actually prior to the fiber upgrade that we started this, but now it's fully deployed, we're fully cut over. And we're continuing the move towards a paperless environment within the district. At least 95% of technology services requests and documents are electronic now, including things like long-distance access, website access requests, et cetera. But we're also working with human resources. In fact, I think Shane and I are meeting tomorrow to finalize this. A lot of things like personal leave requests, et cetera, are going to be electronic within the very near future that would require basically a few mouse clicks and they go around to the people that need to approve them. Displaced backup was installed, it's fully deployed, very responsive. We had a help desk system failure where the database on the help desk system crashed and was basically trashed. And we used this displaced backup system and had it up and running again within five minutes. We've also done full-blown server data restorations in 20 minutes using this displaced backup system. You know, back when we initially invested, or when the district initially invested in this equipment, I remember doing pretty dramatic presentations and really we're on our last legs here and if we don't do something, the world's going to come crashing down around us. And that was so true. When we started to deploy equipment, it was dying as we were hitting. And in a couple of instances, that it happened the day before. This server was actually at West High School. We were looking to migrate it to the new equipment, but it was registration day. So we didn't want to disturb the processes of registration day. We decided to leave the migration until the following day. On registration day, the server died, the hard drives died. We managed to get new hard drives in. It took a couple hours to secure the equipment, the physical equipment, and put it in place. But once it was in, we used this displaced backup system and restored all data from that server, what I can say in less than 20 minutes. On the old backup system that we had, we had a similar issue at an elementary school, a similar amount of data, and it actually took about two days. So you can see that there's quite a disparity there between the new and the old. So the thing is with backup systems is they cost a little bit of money and you hardly ever have to use them, but when you do, if they're effective, they certainly save the... Email archiving, that was something else that we're recording. Fully deployed now and it's been utilized many times. We've had quite a few open records requests that we've had to tap into and other requests. So the server and logical network rebuild. The servers were consolidated due to the centralization that I mentioned before. We've had 75% reduction in the application file servers. So like I said, we used to have one file server at each school to store files, et cetera. Now we have three for the entire district in that capacity. We have other special service ones as well. And we've got, despite that, despite everybody's data being located at East, people at Jefferson and Madison and all these remote locations are actually getting better response times now because of the upgraded infrastructure and the fiber connectivity, et cetera, and the upgraded hardware at the central location. They're getting... They're able to open files from their home directories, et cetera, faster now, even though they're pulling the data from 10 miles away, than they were when the servers were located in their buildings. Does that make sense? However, it's not all wine and roses. We had issues with a product called ZCM as well. So we had the Power School issue, so I talked on those. We had another one called ZCM. ZCM is basically the application that delivers icons on the desktop so that people can run their programs. It made the login speeds... We upgraded that over summer and that was actually a no-cost upgrade because it's part of the subscription that we had. When we rolled it out, we tested it, ran a fine. The one thing we can't test for is heavy use. And we found out quickly, within the first week, after everybody, students, staff, et cetera, hit it, that it made login speeds slow. So not such a big deal for teachers when they log in at the start of the day that it takes two or three minutes to log in. Absolutely a big deal in the classroom where you've got 40 minutes or less to get on a computer and do your work. And not only did it make login speeds slow, but it made application access difficult as well. We worked very hard to fix that and couldn't. It's a known issue, it's a known issue with the vendor. There are many other sites that have discovered this problem after school started. The only fix for it was to roll back to the previous version that we had last year. Unfortunately, that fix was a manual process. We couldn't image it, couldn't automate it, so we had to prioritize. We prioritized by doing the student labs first, then we did student computers, and now we're working on teacher PCs. When you're looking at just under 3,000 PCs in the district, coupling that with day-to-day operations, it's obviously taking some time. But we took care of the student stuff straight away. So we had that issue, we had the Power School issue. So as I said, we invested into the infrastructure, the servers, et cetera. The thing is, Zenworks and Power School are the two things that people see. So we've got a bit of a black eye over that one. There were things that couldn't be fixed or rolled back. It didn't... Basically, those issues, I feel overshadowed a little bit, the investment that was made. And we're currently at a point now where we've started to recover from that. And it was very unfortunate, nothing we could do about it, but we just reacted the best we could. Internet access speed. This was before the fiber upgrade, but since we've implemented fiber, the rest of the district is now able to utilize the increased internet access that we have. It's taken a little while to get it out there. It's a bit of a cultural change for people, especially in the elementary schools, to realize what sort of a network they're on right now. They did, prior to all the upgrades, they didn't use internet at all. They didn't because it wasn't performing. I've had to, when I'm at the school, show them, look, you can stream videos now, you can do this. And they get all excited and then suddenly the light comes on and then they start using it. You know, it doesn't matter how many emails you send out to say, you can do this. I've got to go onsite and show them. And once they see it, then they're good and they're quite excited about it. The rebuild also allowed for optimization of flow controls. So now we're making sure that, more than ever, what is on our internet connection going in and out is what should be there. We're also able to open up internet access to a greater degree for staff and faculty, particularly faculty. Prior to the rebuilds, we had to restrict them somewhat, unfortunately, because of some of the logical designs. But that's great. I mean, now we can let teachers out, they can go to YouTube, they can go browse all these things that they may want to bring down into the classroom. But at the same time, restrict it for students who are probably more inclined to abuse that privilege. Not that staff don't abuse it, well, they don't, because they're scared of Dr. Earl's. Okay, so current initiatives. So we've got all this in place now. When I first laid this out and these projects out, I promoted them as the foundation for a cake. That really, yes, it's an investment, we're putting in a fast network. It's really that stack vision, being able to accommodate whatever's thrown at us. So we're at that point now. We're at the point where initiatives can start coming to us. We can start putting the icing on the cake and not have to worry about, oh, do we have enough bandwidth between schools to do this? Are our servers fast enough? Are our switches going to accommodate it, et cetera? We're at, I'm happy to say, we're at a point now where pretty much anything that's thrown at us, we can accommodate. One of the first things that we've started and started working with is virtual learning. We've invested in Blackboard in a test capacity at the moment. Blackboard is a virtual learning, online class platform. We've invested in it in a limited licensed capacity. We did look at multiple platforms, we didn't just focus on Blackboard itself. And we got test accounts from multiple platforms and had people that were experienced, teachers, staff, faculty that were experienced in virtual learning, access those different accounts and different platforms and give us feedback. However, after all that testing, Blackboard turned out to be the platform of choice from many perspectives. We added to training last, we've got the week before last, and we trained about 30 to 35 staff and faculty within the district in its use. Based on the input from them, I would say it's a conservative estimate that at least 1,000 students will be utilizing virtual learning environment in one form or another within the next few weeks. There's a lot of excitement out there about this. We're not looking to replace classes. This is really just a supplemental measure or a supplement tool for the classroom. But it's a place where they can store files, they can hold discussions. They can really take that classroom experience beyond the classroom for homework, et cetera, if they want to. We're also going to use it for professional development, especially for new teachers. You know, new teachers, they get a limited amount of time. And I get a limited amount of time in front of them, but as we move forward, there's more and more and more that they have to learn about Power School group wise, things like that. Far more effective for me to show them how to use Blackboard and have courses in there that they can then go on and learn in their own time how to use Power School and group wise and other applications than it is for me to try and cram all of that into one or two hours. There are also many, many other professional development opportunities out there. Bloodborne patching video that everybody has to watch is one example. We also have a few extracurricular groups that are looking to use Blackboard at the moment, quite a few, actually. And we've had a few special cases. Homebound student that was home and extended stay for illness has used that coupled with video conferencing to maintain a presence in his classroom. That was wildly successful because, you know, the student was communicable. He had an illness that was communicable, but he wasn't too sick to be able to do his schoolwork. So he was literally home for weeks on end. But this was nice, we could utilize this, we could utilize the video conferencing because of the upgrades that we've done. And like I said, for half a day a week or half a day every day, he could actually, you know, sit by his bed and be on video and see the other kids in his class and listen to student lectures and so on. We're also utilizing the same concept, Blackboard and video conferencing, for a student that is on an extended overseas visit, or two students, actually, elementary-level students that are on an extended overseas visit with their parents who have been transferred there for work/business reasons. They're going to be out of this district for probably three months, but they're able to maintain contact with their classroom via this platform and once a week, maybe a little bit some video conferencing and chat backwards and forwards. So everyone's pretty excited about that. Again, not just the virtual learning environment that allows this, but it's also those upgrades that we invested in and did over the last 12 months of the year. That last case there was actually in an elementary school. And like I said, with the internet connection and the connection between the buildings, there was no way that they could have done that a year or two ago. We're also looking into handheld devices in the classroom. A lot of people have been talking about, I don't particularly want to focus on brand names, but they've been talking about iPods and Blairs, that sort of thing. There are two schools of thought along those lines. One is that they're a distraction for students and they have yet to prove their educational value. And the other argument is that they are of benefit to students. Too difficult for us to define which one is the right one, if at all, because each of those opinions are based on unique environments and what a toaster is a unique environment unto itself. So the best way for us to evaluate that is to get some mobile devices in and test them out. Subsequently, we've invested in a cart and 40 handheld devices and I am working with a handful of teachers in the district where we're going to evaluate those in the classroom. We're really not looking to put these things in the library where the kids come to the library. We're looking to put them right in the classroom in the hands of students and assess how effective they are. Not just from a teacher perspective, but also from the student perspective. And especially if you couple that with virtual learning environment, Blackboard. We can have kids that are in study hall and on their mobile devices be able to access Blackboard and maybe catch up on some classwork or discussions or post assignments, et cetera, that maybe they wouldn't have been able to do previously. So we're going to run that through to the end of this school year. And then prior to the end of the school year, I'll get that together. We'll come up with some decisions there and really decide where all the types of stance is on the integration of handheld devices in the classroom. Technology plan is underway and to do by the end of this fiscal year. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we've got another one coming up very soon. Actually, I think that's two weeks. I'll be coming back to the board in May, mid to late May, with that for a presentation and then hopefully approval two weeks after so that we can get it in before the deadline. A little bit different this year and from this point moving forward is, it's all been based on the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for Technology and Information Literacy in the past. Those standards are going to be upgraded very soon. I've been talking to people at DPI responsible for that upgrade and they pointed us towards the AASL, the American Association of School Librarians, 21st Century Learner Standards. We are incorporating those into the technology plan as well. I won't get too far into that because I'll definitely touch on that when we come back to the plan. Suffice to say that we're actually currently running a survey of eighth-grade students. It happens today and tomorrow on Wednesday is the last day. To see where they're at in relation to these 21st Century Learner Standards. To see where they're at in relation to these Twenty-First Century Learner Standards. They're not officially integrated into the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards at this point in time, so we're not going to look too deeply. We're really looking from a holistic view at where the proficiency levels and comfort levels of our students are so that we can set some tentative directions in those areas. And as you can tell, with that technology plan in place, many future projects depend upon that. Once we identify where we need to go, then we can create projects that will address those needs. Virtual desktops, we experimented and we worked with one solution. We are investigating more solutions. Virtual desktops being basically allowing us to increase access to information, be it on the network or the internet, increase those levels of access for students in the district while maintaining the same fiscal expenditure. The concept being that you don't need the computer to get to the internet. You just need computing resources to do it. So we're working on a couple of solutions right now. We'll be implementing them over the summer. And we will get increased access at all schools. Intended to, especially in the elementary schools and the lower levels, increase access point presence and especially at the secondary levels and to put them in more accessible locations. Network migration, the operating system that we run, this is more technical than anything. The operating system that we run on the network is sort of like STANSI. They've just decided not to support it anymore. We've known this was going to happen for a little while. We're not going to migrate this summer. The district's been through a lot over the last twelve months. And I don't think that if we disrupted the boat too much this summer, that wouldn't go down too well. Like I said, there's been a lot, Power School, network migration, phone system, as well as some, you know, that's just from a technology standpoint. So we're really going to do a slow migration over the next school year, stay where we are. Even though it will be outdated, we have enough expertise in-house to keep it running. And we'll do a slow migration over the next school year to get us onto the platform of choice. Wireless access. I remember bringing a plan to the board a while ago and I sort of stepped it out over X number of years. And wireless access within the buildings was probably three or four years down the track. Dependent on the evaluation of the handheld devices that we're doing over the rest of the school year, we very much may need to ramp that up. If handheld devices prove to be of significant educational value and we decide to invest in them to a greater degree, then we're going to need a greater level of wireless presence inside the buildings to fully exploit those. We do have it deployed in a limited manner at the moment because we have some laptop cards that we're deploying in some schools via Title I bring. CIF infrastructure, again, technical. This allows for systems synchronizations so that we can end up with one identity across multiple systems, like Power School and the network and so on. That's going to begin in the near future and that will actually pick up speed over the summer break. Power School for summer schools, this is a big deal. This is underway. And we will be creating a separate Power School instance for summer school, not just so that they can utilize it for grading and attendance, but then it will be available for student services and guidance councils to access during the school year so that they can use that as a reference base instead of having to pull out files.
Before you move, what's CIF? What is SIF?
School Interoperability Framework.
Oh, help us. What does that mean?
Most applications that are utilized within an education environment are programmed with the School Interoperability Framework in mind. And that means that the identities that are utilized within that, so for example, Power School would be one. You've got all your student users in there. They'll model the structure of those identities in a certain manner so that they can connect to other CIF compliant applications. The concept being that you have Power School, you have your network identities, you might have, Blackboard would be another one. They're all separate repositories of usernames and passwords. And the more of those that you get, and the more we will get as we migrate more to an online environment, the more of those separate identity repositories you get, the more complicated it is to remember those passwords, to manage them, maintain them. For example, if somebody forgets their password and resets it in one and then they've got a different password in the other one, so on and so forth. School Interoperability Framework allows a synchronization of those. So you'll declare an authoritative source. You might say, "Okay, it's Power School. As soon as the students enter into Power School, I want you to go out and give them a Blackboard account. I want you to give them a web account, a network account, and so on." And they've all got the same password and it's easy. Conversely, if a student leaves, you only have to turn it off in one place as well. And that disabling is pushed out and propagated to the other systems. Probably a little bit more than you wanted to know.
No, no. It means we can go from application to application without logging in and logging out.
Well, they'd still have to log in. Well, they might still have to log in to different applications, but it would be the same name and password. There are two schools of thought about automating login because sometimes to do that, people worry that, okay, if they log in once and they walk away from the PC, then everything else is open. And people would just open those applications and not be prompted for authentication. So there'd be sort of a happy medium there between the two. More sensitive stuff, no, it wouldn't be an automated login. But it would be synchronized, so it could be the same password. They'd still need to manually log in to do that. Student learning. I put that in here because last year, we relinquished the position of the instructional technology coordinator specialist, sorry, because that position could not effectively provide to technology services feedback from the field. It was one individual that was not able to get out, the role was one individual that was not able to get out into the classroom and effectively give me feedback on what was effective from a student learning perspective, from an achievement perspective. So subsequently, we relinquished that position and provided those responsibilities associated with it out to the district teacher leaders that come under student learning. There has been close interaction with the DTLs and as they become more familiar and comfortable with that role, that's increasing every day. I think it's working really well. I am getting good feedback from the DTLs now on what they see as effective in the classroom. We've also started to train them on specific technologies. We might have some smart board specialists in there that can then propagate that knowledge out to the field. You know, it's much nicer to have three or four smart board specialists and have them deployed over the entire district and they can go and provide specialized training. And like, as I said, that's still something that's developing, but I think it's developing very well. And we're constantly seeking feedback from the DTLs as well as student learning department itself. Except that we use policy. That's part of the technology plan. That really needs to be overhauled and we are doing it. It'll be built to accommodate current concerns. That's, this is an ongoing thing. And we'll probably actually revisit it every six months or something just to do a sanity check and make sure that it's not outdated. We will formulate it in such a way that it's much easier to accept as well. Right now, it gets sent home and everybody has to physically sign it. Then all those pieces of paper come back and they get cataloged and filed and it's probably not the best way. So we're revising that as a current initiative. And the last thing that I put in here was podcasting. We recently purchased a full video studio mobile for each of the high schools. And I've been working with a couple of teachers there. They are planning on doing regular broadcasts, probably based around the content that's contained in the newspapers at each high school. And we can expect to see that occurring very, very soon. Waiting on the delivery of one more piece of equipment. But the high school teachers and the students are extremely excited about this. I'm sure most of you have seen the website where we keep the school board videos because we all like to go back there and see how we look. That website will, in the very near future, you'll actually see another channel where, actually another two. One will be East High School News and then West High School News. Or vice versa, whichever, that's the point. But you'll start seeing student news broadcasts up there as well. And that's it. Any questions?
I'm just going to comment on Edgivision.
Yes.
Speaking of the last point you made. Because I was in a CISA One Board Control meeting and they use Vowatus as an example of podcasting on board meetings.
Oh, really?
On Edgivision.
Right.
Well, of course, I didn't know we had switched to Edgivision because I don't go back and look at the videos.
Oh, I do.
Plus, I really need to know some information. So I'm very excited to see that we're using that along with Blackboard for some of our learning.
Edgivision actually has really been quite a bonus for us. It's not an expensive service. I don't get a kickback for saying that, or the district doesn't. It's really quite a good fiscal option. And in fact, they're working on an enhancement at the moment, unofficially working on an enhancement where we can post the agendas. And if somebody wants to watch the agenda, they'll be able to click the agenda and be taken to that portion of the board meeting instead of having to, you know, drag the bar to wherever they think. Still in development though. That may not ever happen, but they are working. It's been pretty good. And I think it's going to be good for the student video.
Could you just give a brief example of?
Brief?
Yeah. Blackboard. You mentioned something about an extracurricular group that might be.
Oh, sure. There's an extracurricular at one of the schools that's a book reader, book reading club. Like, you know, just kids that are really into reading and they want to enhance their skills through that and that's a way for them to do it. One of the nice things, see, one of the challenges, here we go. This is not brief, but one of the challenges we've had is, we've got to get them online somehow to be able to do that. But if we, there's a whole issue around using sites like Facebook and MySpace and Vigo and some of the more public ones because it's not a controlled environment. And if our teachers get into that and start doing that, not only can they get in trouble, but things can be misinterpreted. And it's just a path we can't go down. But people are screaming out for it. So Blackboard also takes care of that for us as well. We can give an online environment where they can make it relatively social and fun. But it's a district sanctioned site and it's moderated by the district. There's always a teacher or a staff member involved and it can be controlled and no misinterpretation, or at least minimize the risk of misinterpretation of comments and actions.
So it's video?
Can we post video or is there video conferencing in there? Yes, actually, it's not in there inherently, but we're, we have a couple of evaluation accounts for a thing called WedX that does one-to-one video. And we're utilizing that with the overseas students at the moment. And we're going to see how that progresses. And that actually integrates fully into Blackboard. So yes, we can include video. In its barest form, it's really text, discussions, and whatever other content is included in there. But not just text discussions, we have the ability to do voice as well. So for example, if a teacher sets an assignment, or let's say there's an extracurricular and the staff member says, "Okay, I want to hold a discussion about the price of tea in China." They could post that question and actually verbalize it, record it, and post it online. And then the kids could go there and listen to the question. And if they have a microphone, they could respond to it in kind and post their discussions that way as well. So they could do it by text, they could do it by voice, they can instant message, all sorts of stuff that people have wanted to do for a long time but couldn't because we didn't have a source that, you know, didn't have a platform that had the potential to cause issues. And now we do. Now it's nice and safe.
I just wanted to compliment you on being able to cut and face on time within budget as many times as you did.
No, I didn't talk that.
It was a pleasant to see. I know it was a lot of work that got that done, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you. Can, do we have thoughts of developing a presentation? Technology enabled, of course, to use to describe what we do as a HR recruiting tool or as people visit the district so that maybe we can show them a ten-minute video of sorts to describe what we're doing?
Oh, from a professional development standpoint, like for new hires and?
Well, for something for new hires or if families are moving to the district, that we can, this is a good put forward that, you know, what we have and what we're doing and, you know, all the different things to do on certain media marketing committee. There's a group of seventh graders from Longfellow. Actually, sure, sure. But you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Something where we could do even click on the website. You know, people searching on the website, researching our district and something.
I think, I think we can, from a technology standpoint, I don't think we're quite there yet. I think we almost are, but we're still playing a little bit of catch-up. I mean, the things I talked about here are great, but other districts have that stuff as well. And I think that we're, we're nearly there, very nearly there. Like I said, the icing is only just starting to be applied. Blackboard is in its very early stages right now. There's a lot of excitement out there, a lot of passion from some of the teachers and a lot of grand visions. It would just, I don't think it would be good to promote those visions until they're actually applied.
Well, you're very humble and that's true. That said, you know, as we get these things online, you know, it certainly, you know, I, maybe I won't, so I'm just watching my technology still. But I just think this is a good thing to put forward, you know, as we get these things going.
Sounds like a first good project for these studios, these East and West High Schools. Create something.
I just have a question on how your department interacts with student learning. I know you talked a little bit about interaction with district teacher leaders and that sort of thing, but just, can you sort of walk me through how, for instance, using the, looking into whether or not we need handheld devices? Is that something that starts with student learning and they come to you and say, "We have a need. How can we fill it?" Is it something that you say, "This is a possibility. Let's see if we can use it"? How does that interact?
It's a bit of both, actually. I think, would you agree? But I think it's a bit of both. Our offices are about twenty yards away from each other, so I'm often stumbling in, well, stumbling, walking into Beth's office and vice versa and just tossing around ideas in that way.
I guess I raised the question because I wanted to make sure that what we're doing is furthering the student learning as opposed to furthering our technology.
Oh, we don't race ahead with technology without student learning involvement. Student learning was involved in Blackboard, et cetera. No, there's, absolutely, there's a very open line of communication between the two departments.
That's certainly the impression I had. I just wasn't sure exactly how that works. I'm glad that you learned. So I'm glad that you are talking to each other, a great deal. And thank you, I echo Mr. Prover's comments, I like seeing the time and your budget. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Board members? Safe drive. That is the last item on our agenda, other than public comment on non-adjunct items. I don't know if there are any members of the public present at this time. So it would be an option to adjourn.
Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Second, thank you, Mr. Prover, all in favor? And then our fourth, Mr. Ken.